Okay, it is September 8th, 2020, and I'm going to call the school board meeting to order. And I will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise. Thank you very much. And I'm going to just remind everyone to please silence your cellphones. Thank you. Mr. Barber, come on down.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Saunders. This time of year is always great. We honor Hispanic Heritage Month, and it's so important to our community and to our school district because of the influence that Hispanic and Latino citizens have had on our community and on our state and on our nation and on the world. So we have some special representatives here tonight representing employees from our school district. I'm going to ask them to each come to the podium, state their name, and how long they've been with the school district and what their position is, and then we'll go from there. So Myra?
Hi, good evening. My name is Myra Sestero, and this is my 29th year in Manatee County Schools. I handle the compliance for the ESAL program district-wide. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michelle Gomez-Raney, and I'm the district translator, and I have been with the district for 20 years.
Good evening. I am Lourdes Gonzalez, and I have been with the district for just a short few months since February, but I am very proud to be here and look forward to being at the district level for many, many years, and I am the Director of Curriculum Secondary Level.
And hello, good evening. I'm Deborah Estes. I'm the Director of ESAL Migrant and Duolingo programs, and as always, it's a pleasure to be here. I am next month celebrating my seventh month with the School District of Manatee County.
Seventh year, I believe.
Seventh year. Yes, ma'am, seventh year. Sorry. I wasn't sure what I said. So, good evening, Madam Chair, fellow board members, Mrs. Saunders, Mr. Wagner, Mrs. Yost. As always, it's a pleasure to be here. And this year, we are pleased to announce that National Hispanic Heritage Month is September 15th through October 15th, 2020. This year's theme is Hispanic Heritage Month: Celebrating Untold Stories and Contributions of Hispanic Americans in Florida. As of today, the School District of Manatee County has over 17,500 Hispanic students in our district, which represents 34% of our total student enrollment. During Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize the contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States and celebrate their heritage and culture. Now more than ever, learning about the cultures represented in our community is a viable means by which to teach about the complexities of our multi-ethnic and multiracial world. This teaching and learning creates a deeper understanding and empathy for our fellow students and coworkers. This year, our celebrations will certainly be different since we cannot come together in large groups. We typically have students singing. We bring a lot of our staff in to recognize them. So this year, we look very different. We hope that next year, we can be bigger and better with our celebrations and hopefully move beyond the current pandemic. But we are providing links to websites, PowerPoints that teachers can use in their lessons, NearPod lessons that are out there for teachers to use, and we hope that teachers will take the time over the next month to honor Hispanic heritage in their lessons and with their students. And to close, I would like to thank our students, parents, family members, and our staff for sharing their rich and beautiful cultures with our Manatee County Schools community. And like I said before, here's hope that next year, we can go bigger and better. Now, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Deb, of seven years. This is a proclamation of the School Board of Manatee County and the School District of Manatee County. Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize the contributions made by Hispanic and Latino Americans in the United States and celebrate their culture and heritage. And whereas Hispanic Americans have had a profound and positive influence on our country, the state of Florida, and Manatee County through their strong commitment to family faith, hard work, and community service. And whereas generations of Latino Americans have served in America's armed forces to defend liberty and advance democracy around the world. And whereas Hispanic Americans have worked to overcome many challenges, often in the face of discrimination and prejudice, and have successfully embraced the opportunities of the American dream. And whereas, together we recognize the Latino community in Manatee County, whose willingness to share their heritage and traditions have made our community a better place to live. Whereas nationally, September 15th to October 15th is the focal point for recognizing and celebrating the many achievements of Hispanic Americans and applauding their proud legacy of service and dedication to this county. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the School Board of Manatee County that the month of September 15th through October 15th, 2020, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Hispanic Heritage Month, adopted with a quorum present on this eighth day of September 2020, signed by our Chair and our Superintendent. Suitable for framing. Thank you, Deb.
We don't get to shake that hand.
Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the September 8th, 2020 Agenda, updated September 8th, 2020, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net. And before I ask for the motion, I'm just going to move new business item number four up to the public hearing. It goes with it. It just makes more sense to put it there. So we're just going to move it up. And with that, I'm looking for a motion on the approval of the agenda as amended.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. And look at y'all. We're hitting our buttons and everything. I like it. All right.
Yes? I believe that one of the items... No, I don't have an unreadiness. Thank you. It's in the right place.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Please hit your green buttons. And it passes unanimously. Okay, let's move forward to the gratitude award. I don't know if I see him here. Okay. Okay. Well, we will move forward, and when he arrives, just let us know. Okay. Then we will move forward to our public hearing. So with that, before you make your presentation, I'm going to open it up to public comment. With that, I am going to close the regular meeting, and I'm going to convene our public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Kennedy for the public hearing on the adoption of the final budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As this is a public hearing, anybody who would like to step forward and speak, if you would like to address the adoption of the 2020, 2021 budget, now is your opportunity. Mr. Nelson, was this was not the piece you signed up for?
Well, I will add, it's also about the adopted millage rates. That will be part of this piece.
Oh, we're doing both. It's not two separate approvals?
I think they're all separate votes, but that section got moved up. This public hearing is about all of that, the millage and the budget.
Okay. Mr. Nelson?
Good afternoon. I'm back to my usual thing. It's regarding the budget. I'm asking a simple question I've asked for the last six years. And why do you lie about $300 million to us? And so you've got a six-page document there. If you look at page two, it looks... Here's two pieces. This is all the paper I get from you people. So all I do is copy it. And it shows this is September 2019, you forecasted on your budget $850 million. But when your financial reports come out, which are attached to this, it comes out to 802. You never had $47 million. You lied about it. I don't know if you teach us in school or not, but it's like when you teach about budgets, two and two equals five. But the rest of the time, two and two is four. That's what you're doing here. Two and two is five when you make the budget. The other thing is audited. Your financial reports are audited. This currently is not. Now, one little quirk I'd like to add to this. This has got your AFR. Let's see what page it is. 675 on your agenda today. I'd like to read on your financial information. The district is responsible for maintaining budget controls and ensuring spending follows our annual appropriated budget approved by the district. Then why do we have a difference? If this is approved, then why doesn't the rest of the year show it? This is your rules. I share in hell hope that you don't teach your kids this kind of math. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to step forward to speak to the public hearing? All right, Madam Chair, I think that closes public comment.
Okay, and I will close the public hearing and reopen our regular meeting. And Mr. Barjaron, would you like to come forward and make your presentation?
Thank you. Good evening. So the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to adopt the millages and the budget for the 2021 fiscal year. The millage rates are the same as were presented on July 28th. They represent a decrease in the total millage of .163 mills going from 7.135 to 6.972. That information is contained in the PowerPoint. I just wanted to highlight some things that are within the budget documents and some of the required items for us to discuss. Those are also in the PowerPoint. So budget highlights going into 2021, things have been changing rapidly since July 28th. You know, our response to COVID-19 has been pretty much we're trying to just stay in front of the issues. What we are most concerned about at this point is a declining enrollment. Last week, we were around 1,200 students below the projected enrollment, and enrollment drives funding in Florida. Even though property holders are going to, in all likelihood, pay their taxes on time, their property taxes, somebody could look at it and say, well, gosh, you've gotten all your property taxes this year. Why is there a revenue shortfall? Well, the funding vehicle in this state, the Florida Education Finance Program, it's all based on enrollment. The state will come in and say, okay, well, if you didn't get those 1,200 kids, we're not going to allow you to keep. In the last FEFP run, it was $7,622 per student. That equates to right at $9 million in a revenue shortfall. You know, we're looking at enrollment every day, but that is something that is very concerning. And so the reason I bring that up is because we've revisited the budget. We're trying to, you know, as we talked about in the spring, we're trying to maximize flexibility. We're trying to make sure that we have as many resources on hand to get into the spring, but that is something that we are well aware of. Now, something that might mitigate that, we're still not certain though, but it was the Commissioner's Executive Order that came out and stated that the Department of Education will not reduce the distribution of funds based on July and October 2020 student surveys. So we're calling that "hold harmless." So even though we're down right now, we are looking at our revenue, and this budget is built based on that projection. And so, you know, will that hold through in the spring? Who knows? I'm going to use the word uncertainty many, many times. All we know, though, is that this is a statewide issue. We're at 97%. There are some districts that are way below that. You know, I've read in the paper about some regional districts that, you know, they're looking at $45 million in shortfalls. It's widespread. So, you know, my peers and I are talking about, well, the state's going to have to do something, or the feds are going to have to do something, because nobody's going to have a fund balance large enough to absorb those types of enrollment shortfalls. That is something that we have spent a lot of time discussing options on. We have not built in... We're not recommending any categorical flexibility this time, but that's something that is certainly an option we've been discussing. Another concern, though, is that no matter what our enrollment is, we get a per-student funding amount. That's why I said right now, in the Florida Education Finance Program, it's at $7,622 per headcount on unwedded FTE. But we had something... There was a state release Revenue Estimating Conference for the General Revenue Fund and Financial Outlook that came out August 14th. This is a quote, "It reflects an overall 9.9% loss in FY 2021." So here's another piece on the revenue side where, you know, not only might we have declining enrollment, but with the enrollment that we do report, get funded on, we might see a reduction in the per-student funding. So those are two pieces that we are well aware of and are doing the best that we can plan for. And the third piece of that, though, is, you know, concerns about revenue shortfalls. We're also looking at expenditure increases with our response to the virus. You know, the cleaning supplies, we have an MOU for additional supplements for teachers, teaching the multiple modalities. Those are just the big three things that are affecting the operating budget and create a lot of uncertainty. But as the year progresses, anytime we get new information, you'll be the first to know, and we'll be making modifications whenever we get that information. I just can't express to you the amount of uncertainty that's out there.
Before you move forward, Dr. Hopes?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Barjaron, before you move forward, you mentioned three categories of funding that I guess there's this level of uncertainty. One is our number of enrolled students, which is down. Then you mentioned, I guess, the state budget, and then you mentioned the FTE amount per student? Or was there one other one?
Yes, no, you're correct. I linked the state shortfall to the...
Right, right. But correct me if I'm wrong, the per-student funding is in the state's budget that was passed and signed. Is there some automatic adjustment to it, or would the legislature have to go back in session to reduce the per-student funding?
I believe they would have to have a special...
I think so, so...
...reduce the per-student funding, because that... Well, the total education budget, kind of on the reverse, you know, the total education budget is a flat dollar amount. In many years, we have enrollment that exceeds that. So there's an automatic reduction in the per-student funding because DOE is not going to be able to fund more than that flat amount, right? So if... So that's a amount the DOE was appropriated. So for that appropriation...
I don't know that it works the opposite way, because I know all the work papers that are behind the budget, and I think that per-student rate in the various categories, I thought that was set in the state budget, and they would have... And I know crystal ball, but I think the legislature probably will have to come back sometime and look at the budget. But I just want to get clarification of that. I'm not positive. That's why I'm asking.
I believe so.
So that would be one scenario where we would at least get a heads-up that the state may be looking to reduce the per-student funding in addition to only paying us for the students that are enrolled.
And when does the 21 session start? Is it January or...
Not this year. No, next year, it's a regular session, so they don't start till March.
If... They wouldn't have to do anything until, you know, toward the end of the year. They can make adjustments whenever they like.
As the federal funding comes out of the wash and whatever.
Uncertainty, uncertainty, uncertainty.
All right, thank you.
Before you move forward, Reverend Golden?
With respect to the budget that you're presenting to us today and the caveats that Dr. Hopes has brought up, how does that affect, how does that impact? What I have heard has been a request that all budgets be prepared with a certain percentage in reserved.
Well, that's why I referenced 9.9%, because the previous communication that we'd seen was in the 6% range coming out of the governor's office. But that's at the state level affecting agencies. You know, the Department of Education has been funded a certain amount for 2021. We don't know how that will impact education, if at all. You know, the governor may be saying, well, we're going to hold back from transportation and, you know, other areas. It's just, we don't know. So right now, this budget has the revenue that was included in the second calculation, which was performed in mid-July.
Well, that's great that we can assume that, but given the history of the way this particular governor and his predecessor approached funding public education, how do we guard against being doubly hit because we are now creating a budget that we already concede has 10% built into it? But there's the possibility that with a special session or with some other exigency that we aren't aware of now, that we could be asked to make additional sacrifices. How do we guard against that? Because we know right now, we don't have enough money to create the necessary fund balances to get to the end of the year that are required by law.
How do we guard against that? We look at every area in the...
I believe the Superintendent wanted to answer that.
I can help a little bit. We've already made the adjustments on the lack of enrollment. Part of that was done in March. We had anticipated and forecasted some sort of a shortfall. We didn't know how much of a shortfall. But remember in March, I upped the seat count of our class size projection to alter our allocation of teachers. So by doing that, I then went back when I saw the shortfall and recalibrated accordingly now. But we've already absorbed that loss of student enrollment with our staffing plans. We've made those adjustments. We've also gone back and we've rolled back anyone's spending to last year's, not budget request, but their spending amounts. So Mr. Barjaron has gone through and had a very conservative approach. Yes, we fixed the allocation. And remember, staffing of our schools is the largest percentage of our expenditures. But we've also gone back in our discretionary spending of general fund dollars. He's gone back and redid everyone's budgets to last year's spend. Now, if it's a grant, if it's capital, if it's a different funding source, that, you know, we have a little bit more discretion. But we are going in, and what you will hear is, we will take a very conservative approach through the whole year because we do not know. And we are anticipating if they're going to cut us the close to 10%, it'll be before Christmas break. They give us, remember, they don't fund us our funding in one check out of the gate in July. They give us different portions of revenue. So when we do our October Survey 2, they will fund us in the third calc that happens close to Christmas break. Sometimes it's before we leave on break. Sometimes we get it in January. We will get that third calculation of funding based on October then. So we are anticipating, no crystal ball, but we are anticipating any adjustment or shortfall, we will see it when they give us our next funding appropriation. And that's probably the least disruptive way to go about it. They will have to go in and have an executive session, and they will make those decisions. The governor can go in and veto, but I do believe he's too far... That process is too far in. They will have to come back and have a meeting, and I think they're waiting on at the end of August, there's another financial overview outlook. I think they're waiting for that, and then they will have to set another executive session. But right now, they're short somewhere about $3 billion. So by our constitution, we have to have a balanced budget. So they will come in and shore it up. So we are going to... We're making those adjustments now, but I think what he wants to preface is, no, all through the year, we will have to make adjustments based on what we're hearing.
Thank you for that detailed explanation of what I'm really concerned about right now. Because, see, when the elephants get to fighting, nothing gets hurt but the grass. So what I'm really concerned about is right here in Manatee County, how long can the people that we have employed today expect job security with the conditions that we are expressing today, knowing in the midst of this pandemic that there's going to be significant changes in the way children are provided in education? We know that we're going to need more teachers, and yet here we are predicting and projecting that we're going to have to cut some more teachers sometime in the future based upon some formula that hasn't even been developed. So I don't want to, you know, get into a tete-a-tete here, but the budget that we are being asked to adopt is a budget that won't be any good beyond what I'm hearing you all say, December. And we're almost to October now. Plus, there are certain built-in adjustments that we make within this district that I haven't... Well, I haven't heard the role report yet. So I don't know how we are going to make the adjustments that are going to provide the security for the employees of the district to carry the needs of the district, not from here to Christmas, but from here to the end of the year. And if we do not have an answer to that, I really wish someone in a few words would just say, this budget, we cannot guarantee... This budget, we cannot guarantee beyond the next, uh, two months or three months. We, we need to start being honest with ourselves. Because, you know, all, not all, what, what all was happening up in Tallahassee and the governor and the Supreme Court and all that kind. We are responsible for the people here. So I, I appreciate the numbers, but I really want to hear the analysis about why we cannot count on this. Until at least after the election. That's the real deal here. We are waiting to see the outcome of the November elections. I'm, I'm done. I'm sorry, thank you.
Just to reemphasize, reiterate, this budget is based on the most up to date information that we have. The board, the mileage rates that are proposed, somebody might come up and say, well, gosh, if you're facing this. You know, this potential revenue shortfall, increase the mileage rate. Well, we can't, it's set by the legislature in the session. So, you know, all these things were set in motion months ago.
Right.
This formal process, this trim calendar is in statute. You know, this September eighth is when we have to have this, this final hearing. So this is the best information that we have at this point.
That, that, my, my, I understand your predicament, but what I'm saying is you, you know, you're preaching to us, the five of us who are gonna vote on this budget. But we got fifty thousand kids and all their parents who are not gonna, who, who are already complaining that they don't have enough electives. They don't have enough flexibility in the schedules because of the health pandemic. And somebody needs to say, it's not just the health pandemic, it's the financial policies that we are strapped by. And we gotta stop soft pecking that. We gotta let people know that part of the economic consequences of the health pandemic is that the money that we have for public education is even less than that now. That we really didn't get five hundred million dollars to give to the teachers and everything else remained the same. Five hundred million dollars to give to the teachers and we've already experienced three, four hundred million dollars in shortfall.
The five hundred million that could have been vetoed, but.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm just. Some, somebody just needs to, to say, we're in trouble. Is that fair to say?
The executive order really throws a lot of, even more uncertainty into the whole equation. You know, what does that mean? Are they going to fund us at our, uh, original projectant, projection? I think it was fifty thousand, two sixty eight. It's in the budget book, the hundred and seventy page budget book. A cautious person would say, heck, no, they're not gonna fund us on that. We're gonna get hit with something in the spring. What are we gonna get hit with? We do not know. This is, I'm, so what we are doing is planning on the expenditure side as best we can. Looking at everything, cranking things back to last year's numbers. But when, when we're needing to buy cleaning supplies for schools and we're needing to, to do things to, you know, make sure we have the appropriate teachers to provide both. Frickin' mortar and, and online teaching, we're incurring those expenditures, you know, we.
We were, I didn't hear you.
We are incurring those expenditures. We are buying the supplies that are necessary to keep the schools clean, the schools safe. So that's why I said, you know, there are three pressures right now. The two on the revenues, per student amount that may drop, don't know. The enrollment amount that we may get hit with, we don't know. And we do know though that we've having, we have increased expenditures to, uh, to allow us to respond to what we're seeing on the front line. So it is, it is not a comfortable place to be. You know, the only thing is, is everybody's having to deal with it. What's the federal government going to do between now and then? You know, we've applied for public assistance, we haven't heard anything from FEMA. We could get reimbursed for all of our cleaning supplies from FEMA. Well, seventy five percent from FEMA, twelve and a half percent from the state. But still, that could be, you know, a significant, uh, uh, offset to those expenditures. We just don't know, but we're required on September eighth to adopt a budget and adopt military rates. So this is built on the best information that we have on September eighth.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Hopes?
Yeah, real brief, just, just because I, I wouldn't want the public being left in a lurch about, you know. Doomsday and, and the cuts. What I just ask the public and my colleagues to do is as Mr. Bergeron goes through. This final budget, which has incorporated a lot of, of, of sort of thought around where expenses can be cut. Is to go into the detail and, and for example, Mr. Bergeron mentioned a potential, you know, nine million dollar reduction because of a drop in enrollment. But they've already cut four million out of professional learning, which is, you know, ongoing professional education, things like that. That's an area that can be cut. Various other administrative departments have been cut. The executive directors department and curriculum, uh, nearly two point five million. So right there is over six million dollars in cuts that don't. Flow down into directly the classroom or hiring teachers and things like that. So there are areas where the superintendent has been aggressive in cutting from the budget perspective. Where we can cut and not have that impact our teachers that are employed and our curriculum in the classroom, et cetera. So I don't want everybody to think that, that a lot hasn't already been done. So depending on what happens in some of these other areas, we may have to look at others. But right now, as you'll see in this budget, they've done a great job. Poor Mr. Wagner even got his department cut a little bit, uh, just so we don't have to be looking at, um, furlough like the airlines, so to speak. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do you want to respond to that?
Only if, only if additional detail is required. I mean, there's, there's a ton of detail. I think the, the number of individual accounts that can have transactions is in the sixty thousand range. So this is a very high level roll up. I believe the instructional piece you mentioned though is, um, contemplating a transfer of some salaries to the CARES funding. Which we talked about, uh, July twenty eighth. So that's kind of, you know, one of the things that we're putting in our, in the plan. You know, this is something that could help potentially offset s- state funding reduction.
Right.
Right, I actually had a question, uh, had to do with FEMA, but I really want to reiterate what, uh, Dr. Hopes had just said. And I think that if you do look at the budget, you see that there were focuses on instructional, um, and so I really appreciate you saying that. I have one question about FEMA. I thought, and I, I, I had read, and I can't remember where I read it from, that, that FEMA was not going to reimburse now. Um, I don't know where I heard that from.
Would I?
Maybe FSBA?
N ninety, they're, they're, uh, it's, it's coming up, it's in, they're gonna, they're not gonna fund N ninety five mask for non. Frontline health work, they, they categorized it, they're only, there's narrow areas where they're going to stop reimbursing. For certain protective equipment.
They.
For certain people.
Okay, cuz I had read that they, and I was like, oh, gosh, that's gonna really hurt us. And then you mentioned a percentage and I've heard different percentages. Is the seventy five percent, that's like a firm percentage now?
It can change depending on the type of disaster. Some hurricanes, there's always a local match. Some hurricanes, I think they do a ninety percent federal and then it's five percent state, five percent local. This one I have heard is a seventy five percent federal, so then it's twenty five percent divided between state and local. So we would be on the hook for twelve and a half percent. But we haven't gotten any.
Six years when we actually get the money from FEMA, or?
We haven't gotten anything back. We've applied for public assistance, we've submitted the paperwork, we're waiting on a, a document to be returned. At least I don't think we've, uh, asked for it to date, but everyone in, you know, in finance knows that as soon as we get that letter, we're going to apply. We did get another state grant that, that's called Gears Funding that came out last week, I think it was. I mean, so that's why I said, some of these things are just, we don't even know they're coming out. And the governor's office said, well, here's another half million dollars for supplies or cleaning materials. Our conversation internally was, well, why would they fund that? Because that could be FEMA reimbursable, whereas custodial salaries probably are not because they're, the feds are going to view those as something you would have anyway. What I heard from FEMA conversation was that they won't, they won't reimburse us for anything that's operational, like the hotspots. Wifi, things that we have done to continue to operate, even though they're directly associated with this.
Communication.
Tragedy, um, that's what we've heard. So, yeah, there's, there is, uh, there's a lot of information that just, that comes up very quickly and we are trying to, you know, apply it. Make the best decision as, as quickly as we can. We're gonna go after every penny, I can promise you that.
I, I do not doubt that. Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand that what, uh, Mr. Bergeron is, uh, trying to impart to us is that a lot of the information we has is. We, we don't know for certain and, but we have, we do know for certain, we have to adopt a budget. And in, in doing so, we make our best estimate, call it guesses or what, on issues like what is in the so-called order. That they would guarantee that, uh, if schools open before Au- August thirty first or something. They would not be prejudiced against, uh, uh, what they had planned, uh, to be the, the number of students, uh, originally. And how, uh, and not reduce it by the amount of students that you lost, you know, because of the pandemic. Okay, um, how good is that information really? How good is that promise? To what extent and based upon per student? The order doesn't really get into that. And, uh, that, we don't have that specificity. And, uh, is there wiggle room for them to maybe leave us a little less than we want? Absolutely. And, uh, are, have they done that before? Absolutely. But at the same time, uh, we have to make a decision and, uh, the decisions in this recommendation of, of the budget are conservative. And because we don't want to really be, get caught with, uh, um, you know, our pants down, so to speak. We want to be able to keep functioning and making the paychecks and, and, uh, the promises we have. And that's what, uh, I understand Mr. Bergeron and the superintendent are doing. We have to make decisions. We make it, uh, our best estimate, uh, best estimates. Is it the undesirables that, uh, you know, board member, you know, uh, hopes and, and, uh. You know, we've been, you know, talking about, yeah. But we, we, it's there and, and we're dealing with it. That's the important thing, we're dealing with it and we're gonna make the, the best decision we can based upon probabilities. And that's why we're here tonight. And, uh, I, I think that what's being presented to us is, uh, really good stuff. Is it guarantee the future? Nope. And the public, uh, I, I think can understand that. There's just so many variables floating around, but we have to make a decision. And I think we're blessed by having decisions based upon great probabilities, uh, as we see it, that have been presented to us by our govern, or, or. Mr. Bergeron and the superintendent. That's my evaluation, that's my point of view. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Reverend Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can appreciate all that has been put into bringing us a budget that we are gonna have to decide upon. But as I said earlier, uh, we are already operating and looking at some serious deficits here. And again, when it comes to cuts. The first thing that we seem to lose sight of is whether or not we are meeting what we said is a strategic goal that we want. And that is more diversity and more inclusion. Now, if we are, if we are here about to adopt a budget that cuts back from where we were last year. That budget doesn't take any consider, into any consideration where we've professed that we want to go for the next two years. Now, if that's not right, that, then I, I, I stand to, to be corrected. But so far, what I've heard is that we are operating at the same level that we were operating at last year. And we know that last year is not a benchmark for where we say we want to go to provide more inclusion and more diversity in this district. And, what I'm hearing you say, and we don't know if it's gonna get worse or not. So my question, I think, uh, is, is legitimate. I can appreciate that we are all suffering, but every time it comes to suffering, we find a disproportionate amount of suffering. Amongst black and brown children, amongst the poor people in this community. And so I'm, 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 I'm listening because I want to know how are we gonna do two things at the same time? How are we gonna, uh, how are we gonna make more, uh, make more bricks with less straw? How, how are we going to become a better district with less money? I'm not, I'm, I'm not conceding that that's, that's a tall order. I am conceding that, it is tall. But are we gonna, are we making that sacrifice? Or are we simply saying, well, these are hard times and that's the way it goes and everybody just has to understand? So no, I'm not willing to be understanding. I, I want explanations and I want people to be conscious of how we impact. A very large number of people, uh, in this, in this community, a large number of students. So no, I'm not insensitive and I know how difficult it is, but this is the time that we are called upon to make the difficult decisions. Not just to say, we heard the presentation on the budget and, uh, it's tough all over, so we'll just approve it. That, that's not what I want to do. I want to take the time and I want to make the effort to see how to make it better in spite of fewer resources.
Is there a question there or?
No, sir, it wasn't a question. It was a comment directed to the presenter. And it was a comment directed to the presenter because we're gonna all have to vote on what he presents. And so what I'm asking him to do is to help me to understand how we preserve what we have already voted on. As one of the major components of our strategic plan. And that is improving the abysmal record that we have of inclusion and diversity in this district. So that is what I'm asking, if that is, it has to be framed as a question. That I hear what precautions were taken to make sure that we continue to make progress, even in spite of the fact that we have less resources to work with. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's a tough one. So would you, would you like me to respond?
I can respond to that. And then you can talk about your other, Re- Reverend Golden, I can tell you that one of the things we are going to do. You will see before the board at the next meeting, a board policy on diversity and inclusion. Once we have adopted a board policy, then we will be able to tie strategic methods, strategy, budget, et cetera. And outcomes to achieving and following that policy. So that is not going to hinder, our budget is not going to hinder or dampen those expectations. Or the outcomes of our strategic plan. So, uh, i- in addition to that, third grade reading achievements, uh, closing that gap and addressing the schools of poverty is a top priority. Tomorrow is the grand opening of the health clinic at our community partnership school. We are hoping to expand that and have healthcare services provided for every child in this district with no cost to us. So we do have things and, and plans in place that do not cost us any money. That will improve that item on the strategic plan. But we will also prioritize our budget to achieving those goals as well. Once the strategic plan is adopted, then of course, all of our decision making, even if the state cuts money or says they gotta hold back or whatever they do. That will be the gauge of our priorities of what to keep and what not to keep. Our first priority is people. And we've already made adjustments so that no people are impacted in terms of their position, job, or salary. That's, that's number one. Number two, we start looking at our discretionary spending. What is a luxury? What is a must have? And the strategic plan will decide what's a must have and what's a, a luxury item. And that's how we will make our decisions. So whatever monies we have, it, we, we don't have any control of that. We do have control of how it's spent and the strategic plan will, will drive those decisions.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
But you will see a policy, uh, for your, the board's consideration at our next September board meeting.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
If I may add, um, so what we, when we. Asked departments to look back at actual spend for nineteen twenty as a basis for twenty twenty one. You know, we immediately got concerns, well, I need X, Y, and Z. And, um, I've committed to meeting with every department head. I met with facilities last week, we looked at his budget, you know, can you guys live with this? Yes, I know what, I know what we're dealing with, we can live with this. He was most concerned about making sure that the special school maintenance fund was still there. Because that's what we need to, you know, fix HVAC and all the things that we need to continue. because that's what we need to, you know, fix HVAC and all the things that we need to continue operating. And I know this isn't curriculum, but this is just an example of how, you know, just week to week, the 2021 budget. I identified that his special maintenance fund was capital funded. Everything we're talking about here is general. So he left the meeting and said, you know, are you, are you good with this? Can you accept this for now? Yes, I was here in '27, '08, '09, '10. I know what's coming. So it's that kind of direct conversation with department heads to say, all right, you know, this is like, we hit the pause button. We don't want to see purchase orders going out for things that might be more of a need if, you know. So in the next week or two, I'm meeting with the curriculum staff, I believe, this week to go through their list of items. Hey, we can't, we can't make this work if we're stuck at last year's expenditure levels. And that information I take back to the superintendent and we have a conversation. You know, can we delay some purchases? That's what I talked to our our IT department about, you know, what do you need right now? Because it's the uncertainty factor. So is there anything that we can do? Not commit to something for 12 months, let's say? You know, is there something we can do to buy ourselves some time? So maybe some of this uncertainty evaporates. So it's really keeping an eye on the information and analyzing the budget, you know, on a daily basis and having great communication with our department heads. That's, that's how, you know, I will be providing information to the superintendent to then get guidance on, you know, what we, what we add back.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
Thanks. Really quick, Superintendent Saunders, that the grand opening of the health center at Manatiel is Thursday, not tomorrow. So I didn't want anybody to show up tomorrow.
So all today, but it's being Tuesday. Thank you for.
Absolutely.
That was quick.
And I hope, I hope you will all be there. And as long as we're on the subject, I just wanted to kind of add to this that initiatives like this that started, you know, two years ago, if not longer, is part of how we're going to get to these strategic goals of increasing education. And in this case, I would say health, but health outcomes improved. Improved health outcomes mean improved educational outcomes. And so this, that's from a previous budget and it's a, and it's a partnership of funds. So I think that really like if we look at not just two years down the road, but 10 years down the road, and how this health center, this first health center, if we get this one right, we can really go a long way to helping, you know, our central core or our Title I kids. So, you know, I wanted to correct you on that. And I hope we're all there together, socially distanced, of course, because I'm really excited about this project. But but I'm, I'm excited for what it can do for the next two years in the plan and for what it can do beyond. So I just wanted to throw that in real quick. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Presentation ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one more thing to address Reverend Golden's concern because I think Reverend Golden, what he's getting at is he wants more than a policy. He wants a financial investment. And I really wanted to say, I think that the district is really doing that as much as they can possibly do it in this budget. And I'm just going to point to one item, and I'm sure there are lots of examples, but this is the biggest example I could think of right now at the turn of, right now. If you notice, school administration did increase. But if you go through each school's allocations, the additional increases are majority, I would say probably 80 or 90% are Title I schools. So it's, those are investments in our schools. Those are typically where our minority students are and are getting additional supports. And this budget is making that financial investment. I always believe we can do better. But that is something that we do have here. And like I said, I'm sure there's more examples, but that's just one example that I could think of right now on the top of my head. But I just wanted to state that I think there are those investments here. I I would love to be able to do more, but I, that is just one example I could give. So please go on.
Shall we proceed with the?
Yes.
Please.
Okay, so the first slide. There we are, thank you. Intro to tonight's meeting, the purpose is to adopt the millage rates in the budget. Lots of discussion. Slide two, this is just a reminder of the requirement for budget hearings.
Sorry, Mrs. Saunders, did you hit your speaker button? No, okay, just make it sure I'll take you off. Please proceed.
Just for public reference, if anybody wants to look up the, the legal requirements for the hearings, I've provided those. We had our tentative hearing on September, or sorry, July 28th. There's a timeline that's in statute. So after this hearing, we'll provide the, the final millage rates to the property appraiser and tax collector. And we send the information up to the Department of Revenue as well. It's all the formal requirements of truth and millage. This is a slide that I, I used at the July 28th that shows the total millage broken down by the different categories. And I have the revenues in here at 96% and 100% because depending on the document that we're using to support some of the required materials, Department of Revenue on some documents uses 100%. DOE uses 96%. So I just wanted to provide this in case somebody said, hey, hold on a second. Why are those numbers different on these two documents? One of the things that we're required to discuss at this hearing is the rollback rate. And what that attempts to do is keep the school district's revenue in 2021 at the same level that it was at 2019, '20, recognizing that property values have increased. And this does not take into consideration, you know, new homes or improvements, those types of things. So it's property base to property base. How much did the property base go up? And what would the millage rate be to keep revenue at last year's level? So it's, you know, trying to take out, it's telling a taxpayer, you want to keep your taxes flat from year to year. This is what the millage rate should be. So that calculated rate is 6.8996 countywide. And as a percentage of the proposed rate of 6.972, that's a 1.05% increase. So the proposed rate exceeds the rollback rate by 1.05%. Again, that's required. The next two slides. And in, in July, I used, I've got the median or the mean taxable value from a property appraiser. These two slides were already in the budget book, though, so I went ahead and, and used these instead. This shows the impact because we do have a millage reduction. $150,000 home, this is slide number five. $150,000 home, $25,000 home stayed exemption, taxable value 125,000. Last year, taxes of 891.87. With the reduction to 6.972, that would be a decrease of $20.38. Who's home stayed flat? Who's home value stayed flat? So the next slide incorporates a 7% increase in assessed value. Does the same calculation on the right side, though. You can see the increase in the valuation. And going from $891 in taxes last year at 7.135 mils to a lower millage rate of 6.972, there's actually a $42.33 tax increase, all driven by the underlying assessed value in the home, even though we have a millage decrease. So that's the impact on a homeowner in the county, in the district. The next slide is just the total budget. This is, this would be the resolution that you'll be voting on that's recommended to, to be approved tonight. Total of 879,115,328 by fund. And again, there's so much detail underlying these numbers if, you know, I can provide it if anybody needs that. There's a lot in that budget book, too, but I didn't want to go through the 170-page document tonight. Slide eight, and I'm sorry, I'm not keeping up with it. There's the budget. And slide eight is a recap of fund balances. And the, the ending this year, the unassigned and the assigned ended up being 3.79%. You know, there was a, a reduction in revenue. We talked about something that was associated with bank reconciliations. That was definitely a player in that reduction. It's projected at year-end next year to be 3.95%. You know, using all the tools that we talked about already in the, in the current budget. And I have Gina here. Can you make a note to add the percentages to this slide? Thank you. Gina from Budget and Tammy from Finance are here with us. Okay, slide number nine is a Department of Education resolution that superintendent signs and it really provides the same information again. But I like this one because it provides the taxable value, the millage rate, and the revenue to be, to be generated by each line. But this is a resolution that will have to be signed and returned to DOE. And that, this can be helpful because it does provide, you know, the separate lines. And as we've talked about, the millage rates have to be voted on separately. So I've included that resolution. And then I've repeated the final budget because the millage rates have to be adopted prior to the adoption of the budget. And with that, we have covered all of the required public hearing items per the TRIM statute.
Are there any further questions from the board? Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you just comment? I, I noticed the certified taxable value direct on, this is page nine. We have 44 billion, 384 million, $497,461. And that's based, that's January 1 of 2000. Is that correct?
That's 20, that's the 2020 tax year.
Okay. And.
That was certified July 1st.
Okay. Will you compare that to what Sarasota's tax base is?
I don't recall what Sarasota's was. I know there's is, I think it was 60-something billion. I do not have that document in front of me.
Okay, it's about a third, third bigger than what we have.
With fewer students, I think.
And fewer students. And, and, okay, that's my understanding. And that, that's been one of the factors in our competition with Sarasota for having the money available for funding our operation, particularly our teachers. And when they had that one mil addition, it made it even more difficult when we didn't have it. And now I, I think we're making significant progress with our one mil, but they still have more property value to work with in their assessment of taxes, be it one mil or their regular. And I think that's significant for the community to be appreciative of in our, you know, dealing with money to try to do it, do best and keep the best employees, particularly teachers. And that's where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Actually, I have a couple of questions if nobody else has questions. All right. I really have two. In the budget, there are specific allocations for schools. Some of the schools, the allocations actually did stay flat from last year. Once this is approved, is the expectation that the schools can post for those jobs if they haven't already?
I don't, I don't have the final numbers from the 10-day count adjustments yet. I mean, that's, that's standard operating practice is whatever the 10-day count is, you know, the enrollment supports the teaching staff.
They should post tomorrow. The process of transfers finished today. So any vacant positions will be posted tomorrow.
Is that based on the allocations that are in the budget?
It's based on, it should be, it should be up to date based on our 10-day count. I believe Leslie went in and updated everything.
Yeah, based on the print day of this.
Yes.
Which would have been Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. My other question is, can you respond to the public comment that we received?
The budget to actual variance for 2019, '20, I'm not prepared to discuss that. I was focusing on 2021. I certainly can. I know another component of that document is usually the transfers that inflate revenue. And as I've, as I mentioned in our last public hearing, inter-fund transfers aren't considered revenue. They're reported as other financing sources and uses. And, you know, I mean, it's all available resources. And the, you know, and the way the math works, beginning fund balance, revenues, other financing sources gives you total available, subtract appropriations, subtract other financing uses, and you get ending fund balance. The example I gave, I've given previously is we, we collect capital outlay millage, 1.5 mils. And those funds, because we, they're associated with the 1.5 mil capital outlay millage, they are deposited into a capital outlay fund. We have issued debt to build facilities. The debt requirements, this is Florida accounting, DOE, everybody does it the same way. We, we account for the principal and interest payments in a debt service fund. So for us to get the money from capital outlay where it's, you know, collected and it shows up on your bill as a capital outlay millage, we advertise it that way. We have to show it as a revenue in the capital fund. But then we transfer it over to the debt service fund, which then allows the debt service fund to make the principal and interest payments. So that's something that I've heard some people disagree with the reporting of that and that it's, that it inflates the total budget. I can't respond to that because, I mean, we're required to do it this way. There's no option. Now, you know, we did in a previous presentation peel those out and show the budget net of that. Talked, talked over that slide with staff a week or two ago. And there could be some, you know, I had somebody look at it and they had a different interpretation of it. And so I felt it was just better not even to have it. And if it came up, we could just discuss it. But every, every district that has debt is doing it. I also would be very surprised if all 67 districts are, all 67 districts are not doing a capital to operating transfer. So we have salaries of certain individuals, the facilities department, for example. DOE does not allow us to show salaries in capital outlay funds. They want to see the account codes for buildings and furniture and those types of things. But the facility staff that supports the facility's efforts is an allowable capital expense. You know, you could capitalize the construction management team if it was a private contractor. So that's a place where we'll have a transfer from capital into operating. And this is a, you know, quick version of, of how the other financing sources and uses operate in Florida school accounting.
Thank you. Dr. Hope?
Yeah, I, look, we've, we've heard these comments frequently. And I think we've been pretty clear that it's not revenue. It's not new revenue. These are other funds. They're either bond proceeds or whatever. But we have to approve the spending of those funds and how those funds are moved from a particular account so that we can spend them. And so I think what's important is the annual budget is spending authority. It's not necessarily tied directly to current year tax revenues because often we've got projects that are spread out over two, three years. And those monies are in these accounts. They have to be transferred into an account so they can be spent. In order to do that, they have to be approved in the budget. And, and that's, is, is, is simple. You know, because we, we go through this every year. And really, we're approving spending authority. We're giving the superintendent the authority. She needs to spend appropriate funds to move the district forward. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Reverend Golden?
Yes. Mr. Bergeron, thank you for the report that you have given. I would like to ask you, in your professional opinion, as the superintendent for finance for the district, is there, do you have any qualms about the way in which we are required to report these, and I think I want to use the word that Dr. Hope's used, the way we're required to report that the, the authority that we want to exercise? Is there anything deceptive about that? Is there anything that, that might be outside of the realm of, of accounting, generally accepted accounting practices? I, I want to be clear here that we are not about to vote on something that is going to either make us a laughing stock in the state because we reported something that should not have been reported or that we're going to report something that is, is, what kind of science is that they call it? False science or pseudoscience or?
Junk science.
Jokes, junk, yeah, junk science. I, I want to make sure that you, as a professional, are standing here just telling us, because. I, I want to make sure that you, as a professional, are standing here just telling us, because I don't think anybody up here is CPA. No, we, we have some other expertise, but we don't have that. So we have to rely on you, you see? And I'm, I, I want you to state here publicly and openly that you have confidence in what you have presented to us and asked us to adopt. If for no other reason than the sixty-six other counties in the state of Florida are doing it this way.
Yes, sir. I've seen it done this way statewide. I've also seen it, the other financing sources and use, and uses treated the same way in other states. So, you know, I focus on Department of Education requirements. Governmental Accounting Standard Board, I'm sure, has language on, on other financing sources and uses. And, you know, I'd be glad to bore you to death with that information.
No, I don't want you to do that.
No, this is, this is in the prescribed format. And I believe it's appropriate.
My last question to you is this, sir. If I disagreed with you and I wanted it to be done differently, how would I go about doing that?
Well, we've struggled with that because we have attempted to come up with other ways to do it.
We?
We, me and my, my teams throughout my professional career.
Okay.
Well, the transfer creates additional work. So.
How would I do that? What would I have to do? Do I make a motion and get it second?
Oh, no, you can't, you can't.
I can't.
You cannot.
You mean, I can't change this from this seat?
No, sir. We are required to report the other financing sources and uses as we have been reporting them.
You sure about that?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Nothing I can do from this seat.
I am not aware of any other manner in which to report other financing sources and uses.
Okay.
And I've been doing it for over thirty years.
What would I have to be or do to change it? A legislator?
Um, I'd have to.
Governor?
Governmental Accounting Standard Board is going to be the first place.
Who?
First, we would want to check with the Governmental Accounting Standard Board and see if there's any flexibility there, see if the requirement is coming through them to DOE. I've not done that exercise because, you know, we've been, I've never had anybody object to, to this accounting treatment before. So I've never.
Okay.
I've never researched it to that level. It's widely accepted.
Well, I got, I'd have to find out where the Governmental Accounting Standards Board is. I don't know whether they're in Atlanta.
The rulemaking authority for, for how we account for things.
That's how I would have to go about doing it.
We, I'll reach out to them and see what.
No, 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 no. I don't want you, you don't work for me now. That's, that's, the lady, has she asked you to do that?
No, sir.
Oh, then I, no, 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 don't, don't, I'm not going to be the one asking you to do it. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? Any further discussion? It's been a really good one. Thank you so much for all your information. And we will move forward. Madam Superintendent, um, well, I know, I see we have one by one. We have a bunch of friends here to move through, six. Madam Superintendent, do you, I'm trying to figure out the best way to do this. Do I just go each, each, each one? Ask for your recommendation for each one? All right. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation for the supplemental operating discretionary millage?
Yes, I do. I recommend the approval of the supplemental operating discretionary millage for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-one of point seven four eight zero.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Everybody's using their buttons. That's awesome. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Let's move forward to item B. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on the required local effort millage?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the required local effort millage for the fiscal year two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-one of three point seven two four zero mills.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reverend Golden stepped away, but that does pass unanimously with four votes. We'll move forward to item C. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on the capital outlay millage?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the capital outlay millage for the fiscal year two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-one of one point five mills.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hit your green button.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Reverend Golden has stepped away, but it is unanimous with the four of us. We'll move forward to item D. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on the additional millage? Voted levy.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the additional millage, voted levy, for the fiscal year two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-one of one point zero mil.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously with Reverend Golden still, not with us. Would you like to wait for him?
No, no, it's just kind of funny. It's just the main millage in budget for the year, but that's okay.
Madam Superintendent, we're on to item E for everyone. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on adopting the fiscal, or resolution adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one total millage of six point nine seven two zero?
Yes, I recommend the resolution adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-one total millage of six point nine seven two zero.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously with Reverend Golden away. All right, Reverend Golden, you made it back just in time for the budget vote. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation for the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one final budget?
Yes, I do. I recommend the approval of the fiscal year two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-one final budget in the amount of eight hundred seventy-nine million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
So moved. Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there, Mr. Minor, can you hit the?
He's got it.
Oh, you got it. Okay, you guys are so good.
Well, I, I don't know why I have an S there.
It was in verse. I think Mr. Minor made the motion and.
Yeah.
Just flipped it. All right.
Flip it around.
Yeah.
You, I know you will, I know. All right. Any further discussion on the budget? We've had a lot of really great discussion. I really appreciate everything. Any further comment? Okay. Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hit your green button.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will move forward now to approval of the minutes. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from Board Workshop, August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. Regular meeting, August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. Board Workshop, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
I got a motion from Dr. Hopes. Mr. Minor, will you hit, second it?
I'll second it.
Sorry, I just.
Vice Chair Kennedy beat you to it to the button. Either way.
I heard Mr. Minor first.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the minutes? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and push your green button. Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for September eighth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, we will move forward to new business. I guess before I move forward to new business, did Mr. Christopher, I haven't seen Mr. Barber. Okay, we'll continue to move forward. New business is item number one, and now my agenda is way off, so hold on. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on the approval of the renewal agreement between the School District of Manatee County and Centerstone of Florida?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the renewal agreement between the School Board of Manatee County and Centerstone of Florida, Inc. For clinical experience for Manatee Technical College nursing students for the two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-three school years.
So moved.
No financial impact.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Unreadiness?
Over Reverend Golden?
Yes. Madam Chair, I would decline to vote on this particular item to avoid even the appearance of impropriety or conflict since I serve on the Board of Directors of Centerstone of Florida Incorporated.
Wonderful. Thank you for letting us know.
Yes, sir.
Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor of the approval of the renewal agreement between the School District of Manatee County and Centerstone, Florida, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously with Reverend Golden abstaining. We'll move on to item number two. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on the June two thousand twenty budget amendments?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the budget amendments for June two thousand twenty.
So moved.
I've got a motion.
I'm second.
And a second. Will you hit your second button, Reverend Golden? Thank you so much. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the June, June two thousand twenty budget amendments? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to item number three. Approval of the annual financial report, AFR, for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the annual financial report and all official parts thereof for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. And we moved item number four earlier, so now we're going to move on to item number five. And that is approval of a new job description and position of State Regional Literacy Director. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the new job description and position of State Regional Literacy Director.
So moved.
I've got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Reverend Golden has seconded it, so we've got a motion and a second. Actually, Mr. Minor hit his second button.
I don't care about that. You didn't hear me, okay.
Reverend Golden seconded it. But I, I appreciate your eagerness. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair Kennedy.
I just, I just want to be clear on this item for, for the district and for the community that this is a job position that's, that is being funded outside of the district. So we, we just had a long conversation about trying to cut things back. And I just wanted to be clear about those new positions because sometimes people see those and question them in times of budget cuts. So this is a state-funded position, not by the district, so.
I appreciate you bringing that up. It, it was put on at the last minute because it's really not our position. It's really a position for the state. However, they hired one of our employees on a two-year grant-type position. So it's a pass-through. They fund it because she's kind of on a quasi-leave of absence from her duties here. So they just, they pay her through our process. So that's why it was last minute because we didn't understand that this was how we had to comply with that position. So, yes, one of our employees will be taking this position. It's paid for by the state. And then her position will be filled in her absentee, but only for two years. Then she's able to come back into this position after that grant has ended. But thank you for clearing that up, just in case anyone had questions about that.
I appreciate that. I was going to do the same thing, just have a little bit more elaboration about it. I think that's important. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hit your green button.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. The next section is new business. No superintendent recommendation. These are the board items for us.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve.
Uh, the first item is the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee's two thousand nineteen annual report.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee's annual report. Vice Chair Kennedy, do you have any public comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I sure do. Mr. Nelson, comment on the financial oversight report? Thank you for the reminder.
Well, hello again. This is the report. As you know, I was one time part of that. And I think this is very inadequate. Because one of the key things that the staff presented to the Finance Committee when this all came about was a spreadsheet that I could show you up on a overhead projector, but you don't have one. This one right here. Matter of fact, two of them. It's a memorandum, funding allocation before and after the vote. Now, the whole thing depends upon, at that time, forecasting its cost to extend the thirty minutes. What is the cost? That was asked. Do you know what they told you originally? Eighteen million dollars. Eighteen million. Then it came up with a revision after the vote. Well, it's only eleven. And they revised that again, and it's six point two million. Now, they never, I attended most of the meetings. They never did explain how they measure. And this, this report shows nothing about it. Shows nothing about extending a thirty-minute cost. And according to the referendum, that comes off the top. The thirty-minute cost extension comes off the top in the rest of the other categories. And that's where you get a fifty-one percent. And this doesn't mention that. This doesn't mention. And you want us to vote on that with this credibility? Eighteen, eleven, and six? With no facts? No facts? Terrible. Of course, you used to lie anyways, so what the hell's the difference?
Mr. Nelson, if you could not use mild profanity during public comment, please. Thank you. That's it, Madam Chair.
Have I missed anyone?
That's all I got.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion on the approval of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee's two thousand nineteen annual report? We've had a motion and a second?
I just want to commend the committee because they did just an exceptional amount of work. And there, there are mountains of backup to the analyses that, that went into, to this work. And this, this will be, this, this is a report that's going to pivot us towards, you know, moving forward, towards the, the next, you know, election for this tax. So I really appreciate everything that they went into it. You know, as you know, one of the important points that, that Mr. Minor made is to, to, to be sure that these dollars did not replace other dollars. Standard, you know, increases that the board allot. And, and they, they did a fantastic job in, in answering all those questions and giving us the assurances that, that these monies were spent as intended and that we're beginning to, to see the, the benefits of, of these expenditures. Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask for your support in approving this report.
Any further discussions?
I'm not so sure whether there's discussion, Madam Chair. Is there anybody here from? I'm not so sure whether there's discussion, Madam Chair. Is there anybody here from the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee?
Ms. Barber.
Ms. Barber's here.
Oh, okay. Well, Mr. Christopher is not here, and I just wanted to, you know, while we're at this part, before we go forward, I'd like to acknowledge his stewardship of that committee, and if someone would come forward and accept it on, on his behalf.
We'll, we'll find another time when he can.
All right, no problem. We can wait, do the, do the next meeting. I just think when you have people who are so selfless in terms of what they do, and, and do it under all kinds of circumstances, it, he has always been very pleasant and always been very courtly and very gentlemanly under all kinds of pressure. I've never heard him be discourteous or disrespectful to anybody. And I, and I just think that that, that's worthy of note. He probably knows more about this than, than a lot of people, but he's always been very humble and very kind. So, and I don't want to do that in his absence. I, I really would hope that he can be here. Maybe he didn't get the word. I think we thought he would be here, but that's fine. That's okay.
We can invite him to the next meeting.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion on the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee 2019 Annual Report? We've had a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hit your green button.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll move forward to item number two. Approval of the Internal Auditor's Transportation Department Report.
Madam Chair, I move the approval of the Internal Auditor's Transportation Department Report.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'd just like to remind the board and the public that we, at the last workshop, got an overview of these reports, so I just want to make sure the public is aware that that is, has been out there. We have had discussion about it. So seeing no further discussion, we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We will move forward to item number three. Approval of the Internal Auditor's Sales Surtax 2019 Report.
So moved.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second, and that's exactly how it happened. Is there any discussion? Okay, likewise, this was another report that was discussed at a previous workshop. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hit your green button.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Item number four, approval of the Internal Auditor's Risk Assessment.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the approval of the Internal Auditor's Risk Assessment. Vice Chair Kennedy, did you hit your speaker button?
I sure did. I just wanted to take a quick second to thank the Chair of the Audit Committee, Ms. Vedder, because I asked a question during the workshop that got kind of skipped past, which was not a big deal, but she took the time, a day or two after the meeting, to shoot me an email to say, hey, I heard that question, and here was the explanation and the answer. So I just wanted to thank her publicly for that, that communication to me.
Wonderful, and I apologize if I, if I didn't help make sure a question got answered.
No, it was no one's fault. It just, the conversation kind of took a few different directions and.
That happens sometimes.
It sure does.
But I like to make sure that every board member gets all the answers that they want, so. I apologize for that. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Vice Chair Kennedy, I'm going to hand it over to you for public comment.
All righty. I will skip the spiel, and Mr. Nelson, you are up first, public comment. Mr. Thomas Cole, you are after Mr. Nelson. Okay. Mr. Nelson, could you hang on one second so our agency clerk can get back to her? And Mr. Nelson, while, while we're waiting for her to return to her spot, I want to thank you for the book recommendation you gave us. I didn't know anything about that book until you brought it up, and then it came up in conversation after your public comments, so.
Yes, I've got another one for you.
Okay, I haven't even, oh, that one I know. But.
He's a guy that's 88 years old and still trying to improve himself, trying to solve some of the problems he does. Do you read the book? This is the backlog of the book. It talks about the biggest and most troubling issues of our time, bias, and how you talk about it. And she does it to, so much research material. It moved me. If you look at the last sentence I outlined and read, it says, "Bias is a problem that we all have a role in solving." This is my role. Hopefully, because you all practice that, and it says that, she's found that out, and gives examples of how we have a bias. And with the problems with the black lives today and the rioting and whatnot, a lot of it is driven by bias. It goes back to, she says, "To two functions drive it." The, when you make decisions based on speed and anxiety, like a cop has to do, he relies majority of the time on what he's biased by. Those who, that occurs. And I really would look at educating our students, because she uses examples for five-year-olds and so forth. That's my role.
Thank you, Norm. Good recommendation. Mr. Cole, and then Mrs. Foreman, you are going to be up next.
Madam Chair, first and I am, and rest of the School Board members, I appreciate you and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am here because of something I saw on Facebook on August 28th, posted by a member of the Manatee County School Board. I, seeing that, am very appalled. There were seven photos depicting hate, distrust, hate, distrust, and slander of law-abiding law enforcement officers all across the United States, whether it's Manatee County, the great state of Florida, or the United States. As a citizen, I said, I was very appalled that an elected official would post this. To me, it shows that you believe and promote hate and distrust of law enforcement and those in authority. In your position as a School Board member, you have influence on numerous of all the employees within the School, Manatee County School District and the students. I can only imagine how the employees of this district, who are parents, spouses, and children of law enforcement, could feel after seeing those seven photos. I have a few questions, which are yes, no, which I'm not going to call the individual out, but I'm asking, has this individual ever been employed in law enforcement? Have they ever attended a law enforcement academy? Have they ever had a weapon pulled on them or had their life threatened in any way? Have you, have this person on an individual or on a regular basis had their individual life, their family's life, threatened? Have you ever, have you ever, because of your employment, had to miss holidays, anniversaries, birthdays, children's school events, sporting events, and religious events? Do you have any, any idea of the stress, the worry that a parent, a spouse, or a child has to go through when their parent or child puts that uniform on and goes out to do, to serve their community, knowing they may never come home? I cannot answer the question of how a parent feels, a child feels, or a spouse feels, but I can answer every one of those other questions with a yes. They've happened to me because I am a retired law enforcement officer with over 30 years' experience. I would like to know why this was posted on Facebook and what you attempted to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Foreman, if you don't mind, I'm going to take one second to address this real quick, because it was, it was quite a blow-up a couple weeks ago. Madam Chair, if I may for one second. Mr. Cole, first of all, I appreciate you coming to say this to me, because there was a whole lot said to me online, and you were the one person that came to the meeting to address me, so I thank you for that. To the board members in the community, I apologize if I created a distraction with the political cartoons I have posted in the past. And a person can be, a person can object to police brutality. That does not make me or anyone else anti-police. It just means there are some changes I would like to see in society. And I posted some items on my personal social media. When this first came up in June, a, a frequent emailer to me objected that on my, I think it was my Twitter page first, that it said on my Twitter bio that I'm a, that I, it said "Manatee County School Board." I thought she made a really good point, so I removed that from my, my Twitter account. My personal, private Facebook page is, me as an individual, just because I'm an elected official does not mean I give up my right to express my opinions or my right to speech or expression. As far as, you know, inciting hate or violence against police officers, I don't agree with that. I think we, as a society, and we've been dealing with this for not just in 2020, but for decades, we have a problem in this society where some people are treated unequally because of their economic status or their racial status. And we, as Americans, have a history that we have to deal with. So to criticize police brutality, which is all those items we're doing, again, is not an indictment of all police. So I apologize to the board and to the community for the distraction I caused and for the outrage that I caused, but I will always defend my own right to post anything that moves me or touches me or I think is important and my friends on social media might find interesting. So, Mr. Cole, thank you again. You are the one person that came out of the many, many, many comments and insults and a couple of veiled threats that were thrown my way. You came, and I appreciate your service to law enforcement and all the officers. We're really lucky here in Manatee County that we don't have to deal with these problems, because in Manatee County law enforcement, we have professionally-run law enforcement agencies that are staffed by professional officers who, who have good training and have good practice and good technique, so we have not had to deal with these things. And I think that's a credit to Manatee County. And me criticizing an officer in Minnesota or a police department in Wisconsin, which I, which I think is the cartoon that, that started this off, you know, like I said, I, I think we can, we can shine a light on those officers that are bringing, bringing problems to their, to their fellow officers. And again, board members, I know this was quite a distraction for a little while, and I apologize that, but I, but I do stand by my right to express myself and, and the things that I feel are important. So, thank you, sir. Okay, Mrs. Foreman? Madam Chair, thanks for the indulgence.
Good evening, Chair Messenger, board members, Superintendent Saunders. I'd like to talk about two things tonight. The first is our district's transparency with respect to COVID cases has been disappointing. This is a community health matter, and the school district must not be complicit in any attempts to suppress the facts. The information that should be disclosed does not violate HIPAA. No individuals are identifiable when you present the statistical data. The data that has been published to the district website is a good first step. However, calling what is there a dashboard is generous. I suggest you take a look at Hillsborough County's dashboard. It provides data that can be retrieved by date range as well as school location. It discloses data for how many cases affect students and how many affect employees. I suggest our dashboard take it a step further and disclose how many students and how many employees are quarantined due to the close contact. And then the, the second thing I wanted to bring up has to do with the, the Bylaws Policy 0172. In the Bylaw, it states, "The School Board shall follow best-practice standards of board governance and annually shall conduct a self-evaluation," and I won't go on. This policy was adopted in November 2016, five years ago. A public's records request disclosed that no documents related to a self-evaluation exists. This leads one to conclude that it's never been done, and there are two months remaining in the current Board Chair's tenure, so it's not too late to get it done for this year. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could we have the superintendent respond to, you know, how we're handling COVID and whether we are complying with HIPAA in our disclosures?
Mr. Minor, in my comments today, I'm going to go over everything that I know. Absolutely. I've got it in my comments.
Well, I, I, I don't think there's a board member up here who doesn't want us to be compliant, you know, with HIPAA and have full disclosure to the extent that we can within, you know, the parameters of HIPAA.
Mr. Minor.
Yeah.
This is public comment.
Yeah.
And I allowed Mr. Kennedy to address that person because that was specifically addressed to Mr. Kennedy. I think Mrs. Saunders has time planned to discuss your concerns. I think you have valid concerns, but I'd like to move forward with public comment now.
Okay, thank you.
And then we will get to that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Mr. Sean Flynn, and then after that is Garen Hoover. No sign of Mr. Flynn or Mr. Hoover. Okay, Starlo, you are our last public comment for tonight.
I'm Starlo Galata. I have been employed for this district since 1999. I don't really know how many years that is right now, but it's not important. The last time I was here, it's kind of poignant. I was here with my students. I hugged all my friends, and I realized that as a teacher, I will never do that again. That's been a very hard aspect of the last six months of our journey. How just one week changed everything. By that next Monday, I was socially distant. I have COPD, so I apologize for my coughing or any of the sounds I make. I only have 70% capacity. I'm a stage two of a stage four disease in my liver, and so I'm doing everything I can to stay safe. However, I should have been in the classroom this year, and my principal wanted me to go on a different journey, and I have taken that journey with happiness and love and, and, and maybe a little bit of laughter, because if you don't laugh, you cry. So I laugh a lot. And there's some things that I'd like to bring up. My dad says that there's probably not going to be any money for me to get longevity pay this year. I've accepted that. I'm just going to say, Pat, this is my 15-minute break. I've been working since 7:00 this morning. I worked 36 hours this weekend, and I loved it. I've brought my sign. I travel around town, and I do videos for my students. I've gone back old school. This is my mobile classroom, and I am a teacher at work. And I see so much potential. I see so much positivity. Online education is here to stay. This may have walked in our door unexpected, but it is here to stay. I am serving a need in this community. I teach 80 students. I have six preps. I have 36 classes. If I do two assignments in all four of my core classes plus my two advanced classes, I grade 690 papers for two assignments in one week. I did 73 short responses while sitting here. I'm tired, but that's okay. I'll keep going. I'll keep going, but I have some concerns. I don't have time to go through all the places in between to get to those concerns, because this is district-wide. We need to. We need to make sure that we're looking at who is choosing online education. We may want to find out why they're choosing online education. I've done over fifty one-hour parent interviews. I've spoken to two parents today for an hour each. One was happy, one was not. I'll hear about that tomorrow. However, we need to identify, why did people choose an option that is difficult, it is hard, and it is arduous? We need to look at how many of our students are ESE. We need to look at how many of our students have 504s and IEPs. I have a large number of them. We need to look at how we can extend this program into the future because it's here to stay. We're servicing a need. And I'm very excited. I have lots of things I could complain about. I could, but I'm a positive and proactive person. I'm here to help my students and my district, and if I have to carry my classroom, all my poster boards with my stickers, if I don't bring my computer up here, that's not mine, I will. And I took one of your graphic diagrams. I'm teaching that tomorrow, and I thought this would be a great example. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that completes public comment.
We're on to workshop item requests. We've got none. All right. Legal update. I'll take it. Instructional update.
I have two items this evening, and I'll begin with parent involvement. This is a new way of educating, as Star has just indicated, and we want to make certain that our parents are involved in the process. Our school improvement efforts, our school advisory councils, our ESOL parent meetings are being offered virtually. We do not want parents to stay at a distance. We want them to be very involved. So we want you to know that we are inviting them to participate in those avenues, just as we have in the past. They just won't be face-to-face. Additionally, our fall college fair began this evening, and it is being offered virtually as well, and we had about twenty participants this evening. We did have some presenter technical difficulties, and we are going to be working on those and making certain that our presenters from our colleges understand the team's concept and how to work through those maybe more smoothly, as well as our students and parents that are participating. So it was a learning experience. We have seven, no, excuse me, fourteen state universities that will be participating between now and the end, beginning of November. We have four local institutions, as well as non-state colleges. We have seven. So we are making every effort to reach our families, especially the juniors and seniors in our schools at this time, through our virtual college fairs that began this evening. Some more information to come in the weeks ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Operations update.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple. First of all, we have a job fair scheduled for September thirtieth. It'll be from nine to eleven. It'll be virtual. We'll have the signs, flyers going out soon and also posted on our website. Next, as we closed out three full weeks of school, I just wanted to acknowledge a few of our operations team. First of all, the central distribution warehouse, you know, we delivered over twenty-five, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand pounds of products to ensure our schools had what was needed: water, sanitizer, gloves, masks, cleaning supplies, not only to deliver, but they have to stock it and have items ready to deliver on demand. Purchasing department, you know, they worked hard to research and acquire products. Keep in mind, there's over fifteen thousand school districts in the country, and they're all researching and trying to find the same products we were. So they did a great job of getting products here in Manatee County. Finance for securing, managing, and allocating and being accountable for the funds. There was lots of demands on those funds, and we were able to secure, we think, what was needed in our schools. Transportation, I'll put a plug in for them. You know, they had to redistrict, because of the redistricting, they had to redo their routes, which created a lot of extra hours needed. With the new routes, we had also the register to ride, which was very successful for our families to register students who were going to ride the buses. We have a new ID system, which has been deployed and working. New employees, new health and safety procedures, lots of things have been, had been developed and implemented. They're working hard to get our students to school timely and safely. And the last department I just want to recognize is maintenance and operations. They worked hard to ensure our facility concerns are addressed, corrected, and ready to open for school. So that's really just five of the fifteen operational areas, but I just wanted to give a shout-out to them. Bottom line, it's a thank you for everybody who helped make our schools open on time and safe and secure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing.
Madam Superintendent?
Well, now that Mr. Kennedy has corrected me, and I'm so glad because I had it scribbled wrong, the first thing I want to mention is our community partnership clinic opening up. And you are right, Mr. Kennedy, it's Thursday at nine o'clock. I had the date and the time all jumbled up on my notes, so glad you standing to correct me. This is an endeavor that, it took about two years. It began shortly when I became the superintendent, a conversation with you and also with Dr. Conard within the first week. I believe it stemmed from UCF coming and giving a presentation in Sarasota County, and both of you thought that this would be something that our district could truly benefit from. And I think the team, as well as, of course, Principal Van Overveek, we can't say enough about, made it happen. And it happened in lightning speed, and the partnership with the agencies, with Children Home Society, with University of South Florida, with MCR Health, has only flourished from this endeavor, from the very, very beginning. We now have two student health clinics, and like I mentioned earlier, we will then, by October, we're hoping to launch healthcare opportunities for all of our students. So this is just one of many to come. When we get this one perfected, we're hoping to expand to Daughtry for our second school community partnership school, and I have no doubt the team that's working on this will make it happen. Amazing folks, given of their time, but it truly is more than just a clinic. These are community services that are going to change the landscape of that community. It's not just the academics. The whole entire community will change from these supports. So it is exciting, and I hope that you'll join us Thursday at nine AM at Manatee Elementary. It's one of many to come. In addition to the dashboard, and I thank Ms. Foreman for mentioning that tonight, it was one of my comments that I was going to bring up. I know we've been beaten up quite a bit in the press. It's easy to get beat up when you launch out of the gate first. So we were one of the first large districts to open up brick and mortar at the very beginning of the school year, and by doing so, there's not a big rulebook, there's not a playbook for us to launch from. Our guidance of everything that we have done that had to do with any COVID or COVID tracking or the healthcare crisis has been led by our local health department, as well it should be, and they are given advice directly from the state health department. So I think, as in the past, they were very cautious about what information we should be displaying or giving out publicly, and so we took a very conservative approach to it. Since then, other districts, now everyone's open, and many have felt that, you know what, we should be sharing more information. So I do think the state has now loosened up their philosophy or approach because, again, it's been a very delicate dance of what compliance issues are there, what privacy rights do people have. So that is what we've grappled with. But with that being said, we have expanded our dashboard, and Ms. Voice is going to come here and show you the adjustments that we have. So now, Mr. Wagner will not be communicating updates to the board because you will be able to go straight to the dashboard. Mr. Barber, if he hasn't already done so, will be sending an email to the employee so that they know that they can check it as well. But it's right on our district website, on the opening page. There we go. And if you look, if you scroll down, when I talk, my glasses are fogged up, click here to see the COVID-19 dashboard. So we're going to click right there. And the chart we released last week, it's still there, and it lists, I believe, we have new cases to date, plus, so on the left, we have just what occurred today. On the right, we have the total number of cases since the beginning, but I want to show you something to the right. Detailed weekly COVID update. Please click that item right there. You have a spreadsheet where it's broken down by date of employees that have tested positive in our school system, students that have tested positive, and then if you look at the next column, persons quarantined due to direct exposure. So at the end of each week, you will be able to click there, and then if you scroll to the bottom, we'll keep a running total. So this is set up by school, et cetera. So as of today, and that's based on today, now we've not gone in and populated it other than the total positive cases, but our goal was to make sure by today we had all these items listed, broken down accordingly. I think Dr. Hopes has had quite a few conversations with Dr. Bensy, who, of course, had had conversations with the state. Again, she's just trying to comply with the rules and regulations that she's been given. We're trying to be respectful of their position and not overstep, but it's been a tremendous partnership. They've now sent us, we have two employees working in our dock station that are helping our schools with COVID tracing and answering all questions, et cetera. But I do believe this is the information that was brought up today and that we've had board members inquire about as well as the public. So I do think that we will be, of course, giving the transparency that some have asked for. That's never been an issue for us. We just wanted to make sure that we were in compliance, and we weren't the ones that really were in charge of making those decisions either, so we had to be respectful for that. So those are my board comments, and with that, Ms. Messenger, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. And Mr. Minor?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things. With respect to the remarks that were made earlier on the sensitivity of our law enforcement, we have a role as a board in that we have the law enforcement training academy, which is very, very good, and to what extent that, you know, as a board, we review to see how, you know, well they are addressing the needs of the community is something that this board can do, should do, but I am proud of what they're doing. It doesn't mean that we don't have some suggestions about sensitivity that we can offer. I am a person who has had a gun put in my face, shiny, silvery, and told to give everything I had of value. That's a mugging and feeling rather helpless. And after that, I was assisted by law enforcement. After that, I, in my career, I have, you know, worked with law enforcement on the local, county, state, and federal level as a prosecutor. Almost in all instances, I felt that the law enforcement that I worked with was very sensitive to the community, and I had great respect in how they handled matters. I can remember a couple instances where it was my duty, I felt, to remind police in those particular circumstances that they are people that are looked to from the community, you know, for how they should handle things, that they, in many instances, are witnesses, but they have arrest authority, but they are not a judge and jury or implementer of punishment for what they feel is wrong. And I had the obligation, I felt, to say, "You're not helping when you do certain things that are trying to inflict punishment because you think something is wrong." Nobody's perfect, certainly I'm not either, but in the vast majority of situations in our community, we should be very grateful, you know, for those who put their lives, you know, on the line, sometimes in darkness, you know, to, you know, provide a safe place for us to live. And I don't infer any intent on the part of Mr. Kennedy to, you know, question that, and we've heard an apology for misleading it, but we have to be very sensitive, you know, to the needs of everybody in the community, racial, whatever, and also the needs of support of our law enforcement in dealing with often very difficult situations. Nobody can condone, you know, what happened in Minnesota and some other places, nobody. But it's wrong to, you know, have a blanket condemnation of law enforcement. That's where I come from and how I see the situation. I have some comments with respect to something very wonderful that's happening here in this school district, and I'm going to refer to a release going out to media, you know, today, and it concerns something that we did similar, you know, last year, and that is, you know, celebrate one of the greatest things that's happened to this country, if not the most, the greatest thing, and that was the adoption of the Constitution of the United States of America. And on September seventeenth, we will be celebrating the thirty-third anniversary of the adoption of that, the Constitution, and it's not going to go unnoticed in Manatee County because the school district of Manatee County, the curriculum department, has, you know, set up a contest with our senior high school students to, again, write an essay on what the Constitution means for them. This project involves many, many people. All of the seniors in our high schools and our community were invited to submit, you know, essays. The top five essays, you know, received by the curriculum department from the schools, the writers of them are being invited to attend a luncheon next Monday, hosted by the Bradenton Rotary Club. And at that, awards will be made for the first, second, third, and honorable mention of those students from across, you know, the district. The top five essays that have been judged by community judges included Owen Catlett, Ella Grogan, and Adam Van Sant from Lakewood Ranch High School, Katie Jones from Manatee High School, Hunter Rayly from Palmetto High School, and they, along with their teachers, will be guests of the Bradenton Rotary Club next Monday, September fourteenth, at the Pier Twenty-Two Restaurant. I'm mentioning these names because nobody, you know, of these volunteers is being paid, and the judging committee was very broadly based, included Tarnisha Client, president of the Manatee NAACCC. of the Manatee NAACP, Kathy Doddery, president of the Manatee chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of American Revolution, Greg Agopian, attorney, who's one of the sponsors of the luncheon, Brian Item, who is attorney for the sheriff's department, the Carolyn Sheets of the League of Women Voters, the Jack May, president of the Manatee Tea Party, the Alicia Vernon, the chairman of the Children's Family Coalition. It's a broad-based judging committee, which we're indebted to reading and ranking these essays. The president of the Bradenton Rotary, Tim Milligan, said that they were very proud to host this event. The flag will be presented by members of the Sirena Sons of American Revolution color guard. And I have a picture of them, they're in colonial dress. And that ought to be fun, and there's going to be music. And I'm just saying that this event, to celebrate one of the greatest pieces of literature in the history of the world, is not going to be ignored by the Manatee County School District or this community. And I think our district deserves, you know, praise, you know, for going forward, you know, with this. And that concludes my remarks. And all of us are invited to that luncheon at the pier. It's 12 noon next Monday. If you can go, you know, let the curriculum department know so the Rotary can order meals to be available for you when you arrive. So, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Dr. Hopes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to commend Scott Hanson, our chief technology officer, and his team for working diligently over the past couple of weeks to create the databases in the background that were necessary in order to bring in the dashboard summary and weekly reports. And there's a lot that went into that. But I'd really like to thank and commend really all of our staff, but especially our teachers and our folks in the classrooms. While our students have completed three weeks of coming back to school after nearly a five-month absence, those employees and our teachers have been back for five weeks. And it has not been easy. It's been challenging. But all of that effort's paid off from the beginnings of our mask-up Manatee efforts and that collaboration throughout the community, our incredible partnership with the Manatee County Health Department and Dr. Bensy and her team, the superintendent, and Mr. Wagner and his folks. These numbers are showing me that those efforts are paying off. It's important that we don't let down our guard. I know very few, if any, of our teachers, when they were getting their college degrees, ever took classes in managing public health and behavior during a pandemic and having to be masked police and social distancing, measuring people. But everybody has really stepped up and risen to the occasion. And being one of the first large districts to open up as early as we did, these efforts have paid off. And so I want to thank everyone, from the bus drivers to our cafeteria workers, our custodians. And oh, by the way, we need employees. If anybody wants a job, Mr. Wagner's going to be out there on the street corners waving a sign, please come and sign up, because we do have openings. But let's not let down our guard. Let's continue to practice both our social distancing and following the protocols, because that's what it's going to take for us to keep our schools open as we are throughout the school year. So I think we all appreciate all of the employees' efforts, but especially our teachers, because I know you didn't sign up for this, you're on the front lines, and you're putting yourselves at risk, your families at risk. But we have provided a way to help minimize that risk. And so thank you all for everything you're doing every day for the children of Manatee County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Reverend Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too would like to add my voice of appreciation and thank you to all of the work that has gone into making the risk that we are all exposed to with respect to this coronavirus as minimal as it can be. However, I feel it necessary to also comment on one other aspect of risk reduction. The superintendent was so gracious as to allow us to host our first faith-based meeting on last Friday at 10 o'clock. It was a virtual meeting. And I do think that this aspect of the reduction of risk needs to be publicized as much as many of the other considerations about how we get beyond this pandemic. You cannot, you cannot lie about your child and send that child to school. That is not helpful. When you look at the number of children or the number of people at our schools that have directly been responsible for other children having been sent home, you cannot overlook the fact that we, as good as we are doing and as well as we are doing, we are beset with many people who do not tell us the truth. And when you do not have the truth between you, it will be difficult to overcome. And that's not my opinion, that's not what I think. The numbers bear this out, and the facts show that. I don't feel the need to give anybody's name or whatever school that they came from or however many people were exposed because of these circumstances. But I can tell you a fact, we're about as good as we can get reducing the risk. But we cannot reduce the risk if we do not have integrity from the people that are participating in it. So I beg you, do not send your child to school if you know that that child is sick. However inconvenient that may be, however problematic that might be for you, when you do that, you create problems for other people. And that's reflected in the statistics that are already being furnished on our dashboard. So to ask for the number of children that have been impacted because they came into direct contact with someone who had coronavirus begs the question, when the reason they came into contact with that person was because that person was not honest. So that's the, that's the long and the short of it. I appreciate everything, because I, if I were to listen at some of the reports and some of the letters that I got and some of the stuff that came over the internet, we were going to open up the school one week and close it down the next week. That didn't happen. So we have all been doing a Herculean job to make sure that we keep our end of the bargain. But I think, and I want to thank the ministers who did join in that call and who agreed that they would take our message into their pulpits to make sure that everybody knew, knows that you have something, a part to play in this. Parenthetically to that, I was contacted by someone from the media who wanted a report on what we were doing. And I, the same things I'm saying here tonight, I said in the media, and none of that got reported. None of that was put in the newspaper. None of the concerns that we have about the people who are not dealing with us with integrity. And so I'm announcing it tonight, and I'm hoping and praying that it will make a difference. If it's just a one family, if it just keeps one person home who is positive, that will make a difference. To that end, I am also wanting to try to be circumspect in what I say and what I communicate as a member of this board overseeing the school system, because words do matter. And I asked for a copy of this particular bylaw provision. Now, you all have to forgive me because I'm dealing with some eye challenges and I can't see as well as I would normally like to see. But I want to read this. "The school board chairperson shall function as the official spokesperson for the board." That's pretty clear. "From time to time, however, individual board members may make public statements on school matters to local media and/or to local or state officials." That's pretty clear. "Board members should, when writing or speaking on school matters to the media, legislators, and other officials, make it clear that their views do not necessarily reflect the views of the board or of their colleagues on the board." And I would like to address the fact that I think that that language is very generic and very broad, because everybody got a view, just like everybody got noses. But the facts are what ought to, as they may be, should move us on this board and as a board. So even if you hear facts, not views, as presented by one or the other of us, I want it to be clearly understood that these are facts as presented by somebody on the board, not by the board. Because that too is a problem in terms of integrity in this community in reducing this risk. Because for some of us, we're just scared at the least little thing. Whatever anybody says, we get frightened. I got a letter here from a lady that tells me the sky's going to fall in in the morning. That's not going to happen. But she believes that, because that's what she heard, that's what she had been told. And I'm just asking that, that maybe we revisit this and put more teeth into it or something so that the board cannot be accused of saying something or agreeing with something that one or two or three of us may say individually. And certainly, we ought to be careful enough to say, this is my opinion. This is what I think of, these are the facts as I understand them. And not necessarily the facts that have been brought to the board and expressed to the board and that the board has used to make a decision about. So I think that. And then finally, to my colleague, Mr. Kennedy, I absolutely and categorically and unequivocally refuse to accept your apology. And I do so because I do not see what you have to apologize to this board for. We all got here the same way. We all got elected. We all sit here for the same terms, four years. And if people don't like what you say, and if they don't like your exercise of your free speech, they will have an opportunity to deal with you. Or they will have an opportunity to come here, as someone did tonight, and express their disappointment with what you said. But I think that it would just be disingenuous of me to accept an apology from you for just being the human being that you are. It doesn't make me think you are any less sensitive, it doesn't make me think that you're any more sensitive. It simply says to me, you expressed yourself as is your right to do. And I am not your judge. I am not going to be the person that you have to hold yourself accountable to. So no, I will not accept your apology, because I do not think it was necessary for you to apologize for being who you are. Because I certainly, as long as I have breath in my body, am going to be who I am. All of those questions that were asked earlier tonight, I could answer yes to. Not only have I had my life threatened, but I have almost lost my life from people in uniform. And at the time, I was an assistant public defender in Volusia County. So no, I don't accept your apology. I refuse to. I appreciate the gesture and the kindness, because that's within you, but you don't have to apologize to me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
I will be brief. I just, I want to, I'd close this off, and I don't want to talk about it anymore. But one thing that I did learn from this experience was that I do need, not to be careful with what I say or what I post or what I share, but I need to, I do need to take more time to think about how it will affect if one of my friends decides to screenshot it and make it public, how that could potentially affect this community that I live in and that I serve. I've come to know some police officers and detectives in this community, and I think all of them who know me know who I am and where I'm coming from. But the, but I, but it did give me pause after days of that inflow of communication from strangers that perhaps I should, you know, if there are people who cannot separate Charlie the individual from Charlie the school board member, then I need to be mindful of that. But like I said, I will continue to advocate for causes that I think need attention, especially when it comes to children and teachers. But so that is that, and it was a lesson in being thoughtful. On a positive note, I do want to thank the superintendent again. As we heard at the budget hearing, we have known this fiscal, I don't want to call it a cliff, but this, these fiscal issues were coming for the school year since March, because, you know, we could see down the road, and Superintendent Saunders and your team have been proactive since March and April to get us prepared for this budget that we approved tonight. And that's, you know, that's just good superintendency and good teamwork in this district. Starlow is already gone, but I want to thank Starlow Galetta for being here tonight, because I haven't been in the classroom for six years. And I look at my teaching colleagues and my teacher friends, and I see them working twice as hard as they do in a normal school year. And Starlow comes up to public comment tonight to share her unique energy and light. And it was just a perfect encapsulation of what so many of our teachers are dealing with, that they have been thrown into the most challenging situation they've ever seen in their careers, and they are meeting it with new ideas and a smile and energy for their kids. So I thought that was, I just thought that was such a perfect comment to, public comment to end our meeting with. So Starlow, I know you're already gone, but thank you. And to our teachers and our staff, thank you all. Yeah, we are four or five weeks in here. And I honestly, I look at some people around, and I'm like, I just don't know how you're doing it. These folks are just every day. I know this gets thrown around, but I really feel this from the heart, that these people are heroes, that through a pandemic, they are still there to greet their kids and educate their students and serve in the cafeteria or drive the bus. And we're just, we are, we're just, we just keep on keeping on in this district, and it's a tribute to our employees. So, thanks, Madam Chair.
My, what I was going to say has changed. I think I've heard a lot of what I was going to say. I will say, I haven't been a teacher in a classroom in five years, and, because I resigned in order to have my baby and stayed home with my mom. And, because I resigned in order to have my baby and, and stayed home with my, my baby. And so, and she's five now, so that's terrible. And so it, it, it's, I, I'm fortunate to have teacher friends all over the state. And what Manatee County is going through is not unlike so many other counties. But what I really get from my teacher friends and from the teachers in Manatee County is that they want to feel supported. I heard from a teacher this week that said, and I quoted it, and I wrote down the quote, "Not worried about being sick, but worried about being publicly shamed." That is what a teacher told me this week. And that is so hard to hear. There were so many teachers that supported our plan, supported going into the classrooms, believed it was the right thing to do. That's what I would want to do. And now they feel as if, when there is a case, that they are being publicly shamed. I really want to make sure that we continue to focus on training people, properly communicating to people, and supporting our employees. Wholeheartedly supporting our employees, supporting our schools, supporting our teachers, understanding that this is new to all of us, and having grace and understanding with that. Because I think there are teachers that are not feeling that that is occurring. So I really am asking that we show support in every way that we can possibly do it. And be thankful. We have wonderful, wonderful employees, wonderful teachers, wonderful bus drivers, wonderful school staff, wonderful principals that have taken this plan and run with it the very best I could possibly imagine. And this was the very best plan I think we could have imagined. And they've done the very best they can with it. And I just want to express support and thanks. And I think that that should come from the entire board at all times during this pandemic. Support and thanks. And with that, it is 8:15 on the dot. I will adjourn our meeting.